Welcome to the Lincoln City Council Meeting of August 23, 2021. In accordance with LB 898, please be advised that a copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted at the back of the chamber by the northwest door. Let us all rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by a brief period of silent meditation.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The order of business of the city council is as follows. The clerk will call the items listed on the agenda. Under public hearing, anyone wishing to speak on an item must first register and sign in at the table located in the lobby or up here. The council shall require any member of the public desiring to address the council to identify themselves, including an address and the name of any organization represented by such person unless the address requirement is waived to protect the security of the individual. The applicant may then make one short rebuttal, and each speaker should begin by stating their name, address, and organization or group, and whether you're speaking in favor or in opposition to the item. Testimony is limited to five minutes per speaker. After all public hearings, the council will vote on resolutions and items listed under third reading. On the second and last Mondays of the month immediately prior to adjournment, anyone may speak on an issue not on the agenda for that date nor plan for a future agenda. So the next open microphone session will be next week. Will the clerk please call the first item of business?
Our first item of business today for August 23, 2021 is our Mayor's Award of Excellence.
Good afternoon, Chairman Bowers, members of the council. Sorry, got an earring issue. There we go. Today, we're here to talk about excellent work of a member of our Lincoln Police Department, and that's Officer Daniel Noonan. He was nominated by Sergeant David Lopez in the category of Valor for rescuing a young man from a house fire. Just nearly a year ago, back on September 7, 2020, Officer Noonan responded to a report of a teenager who had had a physical altercation that left two other individuals out of breath and dazed. The two individuals were the teenager's caregivers, employees of the Autism Center of Nebraska, who had been assigned to work with and to supervise the autistic youth in his home. Before the altercation, the caregivers were preparing dinner and food was left cooking on the stove top when they left the house. While Officer Noonan was waiting for backup to arrive, the smoke alarms went off inside the house, and the teenager left the home briefly, but quickly went back inside when Officer Noonan tried to contact him. Officer Noonan wasted no time in reacting to the potential danger and went into the house through the open garage to retrieve him. The young man was in the kitchen area where Officer Noonan saw smoke and flames, and despite these imminent threats, the teenager did not respond to the officer's calls to leave the home. And because the fire was spreading quickly, Officer Noonan quickly secured the teenager and pulled him to safety outside of the burning house. Within minutes, the house was engulfed in flames. In his nomination of Officer Noonan, Sergeant Lopez wrote, "If it wasn't for Officer Noonan's quick thinking and willingness to put his own safety aside, the teenager likely would have died in the fire." Lopez also wrote that Officer Noonan, quote, "has certainly distinguished himself as an officer who is willing to do anything to help others." Lopez has also nominated Officer Noonan for LPD's Life Saving Award. I hope you will please join me in congratulating Officer Noonan for his heroic work and his commitment to the city of Lincoln. Interim Police Chief Brian Jackson will come up and say a few words.
Acting Chief of Police Brian Jackson, again, I want to thank the mayor for sponsoring this program, recognizing members of the city of Lincoln and their efforts, and I want to thank the council for your help and recognition. Now, not only is Dan's wife here today, but many of his coworkers in the back. We appreciate Dan's work. He was an officer when this happened. He's now in our investigative division. He's representative of what we expect of all of our men and women of the Lincoln Police Department. He raced to danger, and he showed care and compassion to others, and that's what we saw in Dan, and that's what we hope to see in all of our officers. And it is always with great respect that I congratulate you for your efforts and the actions that you did that night. Good work.
Would you like to say a few words and maybe acknowledge family who's here?
Sorry, I don't say too many words, but I'd just like to thank you, mayor and city council for recognizing me and recognizing the Lincoln Police Department. I appreciate you taking the time to do this. My wife Amanda, who came to watch me receive this award, as well as all my coworkers. I just want to thank everybody. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, and thank you for everything that you do for our city and keeping us safe. Thank you. Thank you.
All right, our next item on our agenda is a memo due to the Labor Day holiday. City council will not meet on Monday, September 6, 2021. And our consent agenda is Sections 1 and 2.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on any of these items?
Good afternoon, Liz Elliott, Director of Lincoln Transportation and Utilities. I just want to come up and touch base on Item 1D, which is our farm management contract. This is a pretty regular contract that you normally do see up here. It's where we have our land that we have near our wellfields, our landfills, our northeast water resource recovery. It also covers some parks land as well as some police department property. In total, it's about 1,700 acres, and we have a contract that goes out for management. They then hire out to other tenant farmers as part of the deal. The one change that we did do this time around was to put in some sustainability factors in our RFP to coincide with some of the recommendations from the Climate Action Program. And so when we did our formal RFP with costs, we included in the contract for the first time sustainable farm practices, and those include cover crops, no-till, and optimizing chemical use. We did receive two proposals through this RFP, and we based on their proposal and the return of revenues the city would expect from this, and we awarded it to the teen farm. It is the same management program that has been managing our farm from some time, and they've been doing an excellent job. So our water department is the one that kind of manages the contract because we have the most property involved here, but it does include the partnership with parks and police as well as other city departments. So just wanted to give you a little bit of information on that because it was slightly different than the ones you may have seen historically. So we're excited to see what they're going to do with those resiliency impacts, and we think this is a good deal for the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Hello, my name is Morgan Hermanic. I am with the Community Health Endowment here in Lincoln. I'm here on behalf of Lori Seibel. She had a board commitment this afternoon. As many of you know, there are 15 individuals who sit on our Board of Trustees, and they all have to have their own unique talents that they bring to the board in order to make Lincoln the healthiest city in the nation. Now, we do have one vacancy coming up on September 1, and the mayor has appointed Mr. Blake Anderson to fill that vacancy. Mr. Anderson has extensive knowledge in finance and investment, which is really critical to have on our Board of Trustees in order to protect and grow and sustain the city endowment funds. He is also a Leadership Lincoln alum and has served within the community in several different capacities. Is there anything you'd like to share?
Yeah, I just first thank you, ladies and gentlemen of the city council, for having me here. As a native Lincolnite, who was born and raised here, then moved back with my wife and three kids to raise our family here, I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve on the Community Health Endowment Board and excited for the opportunity. And as Morgan mentioned, my role as an investment advisor in my day job, I feel like it makes me well-suited to help provide input and oversight to the endowment, to make sure those funds are used in a prudent way and continue to help Lincoln be a healthy city. Happy to answer any questions if you have them.
Are there any questions for Mr. Anderson or comments?
No questions, just thank you, Mr. Anderson, for your commitment and ability and willingness to serve the city of Lincoln. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Councilman McGinnis?
Thank you, thank you so much for wanting to serve. What high school did you go to?
Southeast graduate.
Okay, that's what I thought. And two, hopefully you have plenty of time if you have to work with Mr. Pettinger. I see you will want to get out of the office every once in a while.
Good break every once in a while.
Any further comments at this time? Seeing none? Thank you so much for your willingness to serve.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on any of these items on the consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, let's go ahead and move on.
We can now vote on these items. Item 1A is appointing Blake Anderson to the Community Health Endowment Board of Trustees for a term to expire September 1, 2024, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call a roll.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1B is approving BWNR South Lincoln LLC doing business as Buffalo Wings and Rings as a Kino Satellite located at 3845 Village Lane, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please call a roll.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1C is approving BWNR East Lincoln LLC doing business as Buffalo Wings and Rings as a Kino Satellite located at 6822O Street, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. Item 1D is approving contract documents between the City of Lincoln and Tian Farm Management, Inc., for the annual requirements for farm management pursuant to bid number 21-077 for a four-year term with the option to renew for one additional four-year term, introduced by Shob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion? Councilwoman Raybold?
I'd like to introduce a motion to amend, number 1.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington.
It basically adds an addendum to the contract, including a provision to allow for possible addition of future properties for management.
Any discussion on the motion to amend? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote on the motion to amend.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
Now back to the main motion, which was already moved and seconded. Any discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote.
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0. We'll move on to Section 4, Public Hearing Liquor Resolutions. I'll call Item 4A and 4B together. Application of Itsumo, Inc., doing business as Itsumo Ramen for a Class I liquor license located at 1451O Street, and the related manager application of Lee Zai Wu for Itsumo, Inc., doing business as Itsumo Ramen for a Class I liquor license at 1451O Street.
Hello.
Hi, if you could just please tell us your name and address?
My name's Hui, H-U-I. The restaurant address is 1451O Street.
Can you raise your right hand, please, and repeat after me? Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
It's too long for me, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Just, you can answer yes or no. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about your application?
Yeah, we'd like to recognize them for our ramen shop. So I feel like ramen would be good pair with beer and sake.
Are there any questions?
Matt's made on O Street.
Thank you so much for coming down.
All right, thank you.
I'll be calling Items 4C and 4D together. Application of Hy-Vee, Inc., doing business as Hy-Vee Wall-to-Wall Wine and Spirits for a Class C liquor license located at 504027th Street, and the related manager application of Rob A. Reif.
Hello, my name is Rob Reif. The address is 5040 North 27th Street.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Would you like to tell us a little bit about your application?
Well, it's going to be a 25,000 square foot, super wine and spirits and specialty foods, very vast selection of, more selection than we possibly could have at any of our other stores.
Are there any questions for the applicant at this time? Councilman McGinnis?
Is this in the old Bed Bath &amp; Beyond? Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. Is that next door to your store up there?
Yeah.
Okay. Are you going to have any internal connections or?
No, they'll be operated completely differently. Different management teams, different everything, so.
As long as you're here, you're going to talk about the Wahlburger?
Yes.
Well, we're hoping to have that soon. Hopefully in the fall is when we're planning on it, and it'll be pretty interesting, so we're very excited about it.
Councilman Shob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I think following up on Mr. McGinnis's question, will there be a pass-through? You share a wall now. Will there be an opening? You have to go outside to come in?
No, they won't be connected.
Any further questions? Seeing none, thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item, please.
I'll be calling Items 4E and 4F together. Application of Big Town Bar, Inc., doing business as Rosie's Downtown for a Class I liquor license located at 130 North 10th Street, and the related manager application of Ryan Rosenthal.
Good afternoon, Ryan Rosenstiel. 130 North 10th Street is the new location.
I'm Kristy White, and same address, same location.
Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear or affirm the testimony you're about to give is the truth as you rarely believe it to be?
Yes.
Thank you.
Would you like to tell us a little bit about your application?
We've been in business for eight years now at South Location, and just saw an opportunity and jumped on it quick and taken a big risk, but we learned from the Garth Brooks concert it's going to be a good thing, so we're much more prepared now.
Perfect. Are there any questions or comments from the council at this time? Okay, seeing none, thank you both so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Good luck. Item 4G is manager application of Grace Lynn M. Hendricks for Littleson East LLC doing business at The Watering Hole East at 8300 North Woods Drive.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on.
Item 4H is manager application of Michael Sullivan for OSF Nebraska, Inc., doing business at Outback Steakhouse at 633 North 48th Street.
Is there anyone here that would like to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next item.
Item 4I is manager application of David Hernandez Jr. for Cheddar's Casual Cafe, Inc., doing business at Cheddar's Casual Cafe, store 2065 at 5424 East O Street.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next one.
Item 4J is manager application of Eric E. Teason for Hub Cafe LLC doing business at Hub Cafe located at 250 North 21st Street, number 3.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, we'll move on to the next one.
4K is manager application of Stephen P. Stender for US Taco, Inc., doing business at Rusty Taco at 2600 Pine Lake Road, Suite 1.
Hi. I don't know if I want to speak, but I'm here.
Could you start off with your name and address, please?
Steve Stender, 19732 Chandler Road, Gretton, Nebraska, 68028.
Perfect, thank you.
No, I don't have to swear. I'm sorry.
Are there any questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, thank you so much for coming down.
Item 4L is manager application of Crystal M. Carter for Casey's Retail Store doing business at Casey's General Store, 2720 for a Class B liquor license located at 1001 South 13th Street. Casey's General Store, 2978 located at 4411 North 27th Street, along with store number 2980 located at 4002 Adam Street, store 2981 located at 606 West A, store 2982 located at 3291 Holdridge Street, store 2970 located at 2500 Northwest 12th, store 2977 located at 4715 West Adam Street, store 2972 located at 3500 North 48th, store 2979 located at 4141 South 48th Street, store 3515 located at 110 Northwest 20th, store 2729 located at 5500 Superior Street, store 2745 located at 2225 North Cotner, store 2724 located at 3003 North 70th Street, store 2744 located at 4335 North 70th Street, and store 1934 located at 550 West Cordoscar Highway for a Class D liquor license.
Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to the next one.
Item 4M is application of T180 Development LLC doing business Tavern 180 to expand its Class I liquor license for an additional outdoor seating area measuring approximately 15 feet by 30 feet at 8600 South 30th Street, Suite 106.
Hi, I'm David Sol Holt for Tavern 180. Location, 8600 South 30th Street, Suite 106. Anything else?
Would you like to tell us a little bit about your application?
Well, we added some outdoor seating, and we just think it would be beneficial to the business to be able to serve alcohol in that patio area.
Perfect. Are there any questions or comments from the council at this time? Seeing none, thank you so much for coming down.
Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, let's move on.
Vote on our liquor items.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval on Items 4C and 4D.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Shob, seconded by Councilman McGinnis. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 6-0.
Do you mind if I go ahead and start?
There we go.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of Items 4A, 4B, and 4E through M.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Shob, seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried 7-0.
That was fun, thank you.
Next section is Section 5, Public Hearing Resolutions. I'll be reading Item 5A, authorizing the Parks and Recreation Department's submission of an application for financial aid to the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission's Recreational Trails Program for the placement of the Wilderness Park Bridge generally located at Highway 77 and Rockabye Road.
Masks and glasses, what a challenge. Lynn Johnson, Lincoln Parks and Recreation. The action for the city council this afternoon is we are requesting approval to submit a grant application to the recreational trails program that is administered by the Game and Parks Commission. The grant application is to support installation of a bridge within Wilderness Park in the southwest area of the park. In this area of the park crosses an unnamed tributary of Salt Creek in that area. The former crossing used to be up here. People used to come up, they'd cross within the public right-of-way and wrap them around. And with the expansion of Highway 77, we've been asked not to do that anymore, to discourage that activity anyway. And so we'd like to actually install a bridge at this location. I can show you an image of the bridge. We were able to purchase some bridges that were originally owned by the City of Omaha a couple of years ago, and this is a short section of bridge that actually will work very well at this location. We plan on installing it here. The advantage of installing a bridge in this location is that when people couldn't use the public right-of-way there, it cut off that section of trail, and this will allow us to complete about a two-mile loop in the southwest corner of Wilderness Park, and it also provides a maintenance vehicle access to the park as well. The grant request is about $186,000. The city contribution that we've identified in our capital improvement program is about $46,000, and we've identified grants or donations in the amounts of about $2,000 to support this grant application. And I think with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have this afternoon.
Are there any questions for Director Johnson? Councilwoman Washington?
I don't have any questions, but I wanted to compliment the Parks Department for thinking in advance and buying old bridges and finding a use for them here in Lincoln.
Yeah, we got a great deal on those bridges. They were installed in a park. They're in perfectly good condition. They just changed the style of their bridges, so we were happy to get them.
Councilman Shob?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, thank you for coming forward and talking about applying for grants and other financial aid. We've been having weeks and weeks of conversation about the budget, and I want to point out again that our budget is a three-legged stool, and one part of the stool are grants and fundraising activities outside of property.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of items four A, four B, and four E through M.
Second.
Moved by Councilman Chobin, seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, may I please do a roll call vote?
Beckis?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Chob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
That was fun, thank you.
Next section is Section Five, Public Hearing Resolutions. I'll be reading item five A, authorizing the Parks and Recreation Department's submission of an application for financial aid to the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission's recreational trails program for the placement of the Wilderness Park Bridge generally located at Highway 77 and Rockabye Road.
Masks and glasses, what a challenge. Lynn Johnson, Lincoln Parks and Recreation.
Good afternoon. The action for the city council this afternoon is we are requesting approval to submit a grant application to the recreational trails program that is administered by the Game and Parks Commission. The grant application is to support installation of a bridge within Wilderness Park in the southwest area of the park, in this area of the park, crosses an unnamed tributary of Salt Creek in that area. The former crossing used to be up here. People used to come up, they'd cross within the public right-of-way and wrap them around. And with the expansion of Highway 77, we've been asked not to do that anymore, to discourage that activity anyway. And so we'd like to actually install a bridge at this location. I can show you an image of the bridge. We were able to purchase some bridges from... that were originally owned by the city of Omaha a couple of years ago. And this is a short section of bridge that actually will work very well at this location. We plan on installing it here. The advantage of installing a bridge in this location is that when people couldn't use the public right-of-way there, it cut off that section of trail. And this will allow us to complete about a two-mile loop in the southwest corner of Wilderness Park. And it also provides maintenance vehicle access to the park as well. The grant request is about $186,000. The city contribution that we've identified in our capital improvement program is about $46,000. And we've identified grants or donations that in the amounts of about $2,000 to support this grant application. And I think with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you may have this afternoon.
Are there any questions for Director Johnson? Councilwoman Washington?
I don't have any questions, but I wanted to compliment the Parks Department for thinking in advance and buying old bridges and finding a use for them here in Lincoln.
Yeah, we got a great deal on those bridges. They were installed in a park. They're in perfectly good condition. They just changed the style of their bridges, so we were happy to get them.
Councilman Chobin?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Johnson, thank you for coming forward and talking about applying for grants and other financial aid. We've been having weeks and weeks of conversation about the budget, and I want to point out again that our budget is a three-legged stool. And one part of the stool are grants and fundraising activities outside of property taxes and sales tax. Thank you for taking advantage of that to make our city better.
Absolutely, thanks very much.
Any further questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, thank you so much, Director Johnson. Is there anyone else here that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on.
We can vote on this item. Item five A is authorizing the Parks and Recreation Department's submission of an application for financial aid to the Nebraska Game and Parks Commission's recreational trails program for the placement of the Wilderness Parks Bridge generally located at Highway 77 and Rockabye Road, introduced by Chob.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, may I please do a roll call vote?
Chob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. We'll move on to Section Six, as our public hearing ordinance's second reading and related resolutions. Item six A is amending the pay schedule for certain employee groups by adjusting the pay range for employees whose classifications are assigned to pay ranges prefixed by P to be effective August 19, 2021.
Good afternoon, Council Doug McDaniel, Human Resources. This ordinance sets in place the next pay plan for the P range, which is LPU, the labor contract that represents our police officers and sergeants. It is the third installment of a three-year contract that you've already approved in the past. This just places the ordinance to update for the upcoming increase of 3.25%.
Are there any questions or comments at this time? Seeing none, is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you so much.
I'll be calling item six B. Six B is street name change 21002, renaming West Chipwood Lane to Northwest Chipwood Lane to Hub Hall Heights. First addition, generally located at Northwest 48th Street and West Holdridge Street.
I think how we'll start this off is we'll have David Carey as a staff kind of start us off, and then we'll open up to public comment after that, so...
Very good.
I'll ask Director Carey to come up, and then I'll invite anyone else who wishes to speak after that.
Thank you very much, David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street, Suite 213. What's before you today is a recommendation for a street name change to rename West Chipwood Lane to Northwest Chipwood Lane. This comes via the Street Naming Committee. I think a little bit of visual will help explain what is being proposed and how we got here. And then I can answer any questions that you might have. This is the plan that's currently approved. What we see here, this is West Holdridge over here. Over on the side here would be Northwest 48th Street further to the west. We have West Hub Hall Drive coming down, and then it changes to West Chipwood Lane. The two outlined lots here are those, the two that are impacted by this change. I want to make sure that you understand that that's the existing homes that are being impacted by this potential change. So what is happening here is that typically a north-south street in the northwest area of the city would start with northwest in that west. It has been called west up until this point. So the proposal by following the existing guidelines would say that it should be northwest. What I'll also show you is what the original plan was that has changed over time. And what you'll see here is that West Hub Hall Drive going into West Chipwood Lane originally was planned to go east-west. But in the interim years, the plan changed in the undeveloped portion of this, and now it is designed to go straight north and south. So thus how we got to this point of needing the street name change. In the... This comes directly to you from the Street Naming Committee. In your summary report here, it does explain that there are some options here, but I would be willing to answer any questions that you might have as we discuss this today.
Are there any questions, Councilwoman Washington?
Director Carey, thank you for coming this afternoon and telling us what the suggestion is. Can you explain why, when it moved from an east-west to north-south, we didn't pick up a number?
Yes, so...
Forty-five is just...
Yeah, so I think what happened is that it really was kind of an oversight in the sense of when the plans were changing, that it wasn't caught at that time. I think the other reality here is that the previous final plat approval and then those building permits for the impacted lots, in hindsight, it would have been better if we had not approved the building of those lots at the time, but it did happen, and it is the reality that we're dealing with right now.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Carey, I'm wondering, you mentioned there were two homes affected. So two home... We would ask those two homeowners to effectively change their address. Is that correct?
Yes, that is the immediate impact of it, yes.
Okay. And I know we will be hearing from the public, I assume, in a little bit, but I'm wondering, and I really do appreciate the work of the Street Naming Committee. That's a hard and sometimes thankless job. But can we talk about, and maybe it's after we hear from the public, is there any way that our guidelines would permit us to not make these two homeowners have to go through the process of changing their addresses at this point in time?
Yeah, sure. I appreciate the question.
Could you address that? Thank you.
So there was discussion about different versions of how to handle this. What you have before you is the by-the-book, following the guidelines strictly. Ultimately, the decision is up to you on how to handle this. Basically, the other option that makes the most sense, that would not be as confusing as it would be to have like three different names of streets in a row there, would be to continue West Chipwood Lane all the way down to West Holdridge. That's something that would not be as disruptive as going from West Hub Hall Drive to West Chipwood and then to Northwest Chipwood. We don't want to do that. That's the version that we don't want to do. But I would suggest that it would be palatable to continue West Chipwood Lane, mainly because there are no further existing addresses to the south yet, so that we are really keeping the two that would be impacted, potentially not impacting them directly. And then we would just live with the fact that it'd be West Chipwood down to West Holdridge.
Thank you for that suggestion. And again, I want to hear from the rest of the audience today, but it would... I hope that we could consider that as we move forward, perhaps, to keep it West Chipwood instead of going back and forth for the reasons that you explained. So thank you for that offer.
We're gonna go Councilman Chobin, then Councilwoman Raybold.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Carey, you talked about maybe this should have been done when we were plotting and plating and building permitting. So how did it get on our radar now? Why, you know...
So the beginnings of the final plating and building of the development further south is starting to happen. And so then it became aware of the specificity and the finality of the alignment of the street further to the south.
So another development plan came forward, and that's when...
Correct.
It got on the Street Naming Committee's agenda.
Correct.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Raybold?
Yes, thank you, David Carey. Can you tell us a little bit why it wouldn't be called West Hub Hall Drive? Because it seems like it's just a continuation of West Hub Hall Drive, and that would connect right with Holdridge.
Well, I think in hindsight, you could rename all the streets. I think what we're trying to do is limit the impact then as few properties as possible. And so if, for one thing, changing it to West Hub Hall Drive, that would still impact the two existing...
Right.
Lots in a similar way. They would still need to change their address. The other thing is that we would... The Street Naming Committee at that point probably would still suggest Northwest Hub Hall Drive going down the Holdridge. So we sort of would be dealing with the same issue, I think.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions or comments for Director Carey at this time? Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
And then I would like to invite anyone else who would like to come and speak on this item to come on up and start with your name and address, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jeff Bale. I reside with my wife at 4536 West Chipwood Lane. We built our home there 12 years ago. And then joining me today is Kaylee Sadoras. She and her husband Matt live at 4534 West Chipwood. We're the two homes that are impacted. The comments just made really enlightened me a little bit, and when I heard the word oversight, that kind of rang a bell with me, because we have gone through a process the past couple of weeks looking at what the costs would be to us for an address change. And I have outlined in the little packet given to you, to have the address block changed on the house and have the, you know, little things like the concrete match, because it's in a concrete brick wall. That's almost $1,500. We tried to get estimates from three contractors that were provided to us by Menards. None of them responded. We did find, through research on the internet, a gentleman who owns Concrete Wizards here in Lincoln, five-star rating, very good guy. And so we both essentially got the same estimate. Then we started looking at, you know, my wife and I are retired, and looking at contacts and doctors and specialists and DMV and the time to change all of that stuff. And using a very simple formula, we said, okay, 10 minutes of contact, whether it's go to the internet, write a card, whatever. And we came up with about 53 and a half hours, if my memory serves me right. And I used the state nine-dollar, you know, rate for minimum wage, and that's almost $500. So without getting too technical about, well, what is it gonna cost at DMV and what are other costs and contacts forgot, it's gonna be $2,000 a residence minimum. That's quite an impact on us. And this is kind of our forever home. We built it 12 years ago, as I stated, and plan to be there forever. We love Lincoln. My wife was born here. I moved here when I was in third grade. So because of the oversight, and I'm gonna use only that word, you know, it really has an impact on us. We live right at the end of the intersection Whispering Wood and West Chipwood. So we've got Hub Hall to the right. We've got West Chipwood to our left as you're looking to the west. And we don't think it should be changed. But, you know, it's two votes, so to speak. And if we can't convince people not to change it, and we have to go ahead with the change, we feel like the city or whomever is in charge needs to reimburse us for those costs and give us a timeline so we can be prepared for a smooth transition. I've got 12 doctors, and I've got some health issues. And it's very, very important that they know immediately where I'm at and how to reach me. So that's just one of many items. And I know Kaylee here does have a few comments to make, but that's all I have for you today, and thank you very much.
Are there any questions for Mr. Bale at this point? And I'll say stay up there while we go to... I'm gonna mispronounce his name.
Kaylee Sadoras.
Sadoras. Well, then we'll hear from Miss Sadoras, and then see if the council has any questions for both of you.
Okay. We're at 4534 West Chipwood Lane. I run an in-home childcare from my home, so even aside from, you know, just our home stuff, I have to go through and update all those documents, update the contracts with the parents, my business cards, my advertisement, all of that stuff. We got married two years ago, and I know what it took to change my last name, and that was a choice. And I make about $210 a day. And when I changed my last name, I took two days off of work. So that's $420 if I have to take two days off of work, or I pay a sub what I make per hour. So either way, more lost wages for me. And during COVID, when COVID hit last year, I had several parents who started working from home, or some that had to cut back to part-time. So my family of five were still recovering, like many families and people, from the impacts that were felt financially from COVID too. So like he said, I know maybe the change is imminent. The Northwest Chipwood might not be as bad, still time-consuming, but the numbers on the house, and I tried to put it up here earlier. Jeff has provided pictures where you can see that it's in the structure of our home. So like he said, that's in the structure of our home. And we don't plan to go anywhere either. We've put a lot of time and money into our home. We're considering it our forever home. We obviously have some great neighbors, so we'd like to stay there. And like I said, we would just like to consider that if it's imminent, and that's what's going to be done, that they consider the time, money, and work that's gonna go in on our end.
Are there any questions for either of these folks? I just have one comp... Did you have anything to say? I just want to say I appreciate you bringing this up, because I think that, you know, with doctors and medications and the business cost to it, that's something that I honestly didn't initially think about until you brought it up, so thank you for putting that on the radar, because I didn't even think of that, so thank you so much. So what I'm gonna do now is ask if there's anyone else from the public that wishes to testify, and if no one else wishes to provide public comment, then I'm gonna invite Director Carey to come up and then provide a rebuttal. And see if the council has any further questions for him. This item will be voted on next week, so we won't have an answer for you today. But in seven days, that's when we'll vote on that.
Well, thank you all for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Are there any questions we can answer for you about that, or that process makes sense?
Next week here, same time, or...
Next week, our meeting will be at 5:30.
Five, oh, perfect. I can get here a little easier at 5:30.
And that won't be open to public comment. That'll just be the council discussing out loud.
How will we be notified once a decision is made? Are we just gonna get a letter in the mail like we did originally when...
Director Carey will reach out to you and let you know.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that wishes to testify on this item? Okay, seeing none, I would invite Director Carey to come up and provide a rebuttal.
I don't really have any rebuttal, per se. I think I'll see if there's any more questions.
Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Carey, so after hearing the testimony from our two residents that live, and they're the only two, as you well know, that live there, what would be... I would like to see us leave the addresses the same and have the council consider that. So what is the procedure if we were to do that? Is it an amendment? What do we need to do technically to recommend?
I think what would happen is that in your motion for a street name change for this item, I think you would just move to name it West Chipwood.
Okay.
And I think that's... I don't think you have to amend anything, because you're taking it up for consideration right now.
Very good. That's the only question I had, so I appreciate, again, our neighbors being here today, and to you, Director Carey, and to the Street Naming Committee. These are never easy things, so I'm really grateful to hear the impact. And thank you, Director Carey, for helping us walk through what might... we might be able to do in order to change the guidelines and still operate within the framework of what is appropriate, so thank you.
Councilwoman Washington?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Carey, obviously this is a situation you probably didn't want to have coming forward. Do we have other places in Lincoln where something like this is in effect, where there's a couple of houses? Or that we have a street that changed? I know we have streets that change names. But it seems like a huge lift to ask two residences to make a change that was a mistake that the city overlooked or an oversight or something. And when I look at the plat, the projected plat map, they're only looking at facing two more houses toward West Chipwood, if I'm sort of reading the map correctly. So ultimately, there's only four houses who would have this interesting situation where you'd come off of Holdridge, and it would be Chipwood, and then it would become Hub. Do we have other places like that in Lincoln, and how do we sign that and have police and fire? I think they've weighed in. Would you remind us what...
Yeah, so I mean, the naming structure that we have is followed very consistently. And that is for a lot of different reasons, but, you know, emergency services is a big reason for doing it that way. So we do do it that way as much as we can, almost always. I know that there have been past situations where we have had to change street names, and we did impact property owners. We really, really want to try to avoid that as much as possible. As far as, you know, situations just like this, I can't speak to, you know, specific examples right now today, but we do try to avoid that as much as possible. And your point is well-taken that... And I, your point is well-taken, that because there aren't going to be that many additional addresses, you know, coming off of this, it's not as much of a, of an impact on our, the typical way of saying Northwest Chitwood, if we were to do it that way, instead of, and then instead of calling it West Chitwood. So, that's part of the reason why this is, this could be more palatable.
And could you address fire and, and police? Have they weighed in on this?
Yes, they have weighed in. They're, they're part of the Street Naming Committee. I think a lot of it is, you know, the expectation and the, the starting point is that we would follow the typical way of doing it. But I think that there wa, there was good discussion about, could you do it in the way that's possibly going to happen here? And, you know, I think, I think their preference would be not to do it. But I think they understand the situation here.
Yeah. I mean, obviously, we all want emergency services to reach them when they're necessary. I don't want people to get confused about where they need to go. But if they can manage that, then we might be able to find a solution here. Thank you.
Any further questions or comments for Director Carey at this time? Seeing none, thank you so much, Director Carey.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and move on to the next item, please.
Item 6C is Change of Zone 08041C. Application of Mike Marsh to amend the existing Pine Wood Plan unit development to revise the layout and mix of uses on property generally located at the southeast corner of South 78th Street and Pine Lake Road.
Good afternoon. My name is Tim Gergen with Clark &amp; Anderson. I have the owner here, Mike Marsh. We have a fairly simple amendment to an existing PUD at 70th and Pine Lake. It's kind of a sign of the times. It's an older PUD, but it's a sign of the times where we're revising commercial to more of a residential layout. And so, we are taking out some commercial development and putting in townhomes on the street. And that also includes adding the drive-through facility. What we're also seeing is a lot of, drive-through facilities are popping up now more than ever in this last year, just with the COVID reasons, for drive-throughs instead of having a more walk-in business. I have the owner here, if you want to tag any questions you may have on the project.
Are there any questions from the council? Seeing none, thank you so much for coming down and presenting.
Thank you, thank you.
Go ahead and move on to the next item, please. Or is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Okay.
Item 6D is Text Amendment 21006. Application of the Planning Director to amend Lincoln Municipal Code, Section 27.02260, to adjust the front yard and required yard definitions, and add a corner front yard definition. Amending Section 27.60.020 and 2765.020 to modify requirements for PUDs and CUPs, and permit an increase in height for multifamily structures. Amending Section 27.60.060 and Section 27.64.010 to permit conversion of approved floor area to dwelling units administratively. Amending Section 27.61.50, allowing residential uses to rebuild original, to rebuild using original setbacks. Amending Section 27.61.100 to remove reconstruction. Amending Section 27.62.040 and 27.62.070 to allow dwellings in the B2 as a permitted use. Amending Section 27.63.030 to allow a 15% increase in improved dwelling units administratively. Amending Section 27.67.020 to reduce parking requirements in various districts. Amending Section 27.72.020 and 2772.030 to modify the lot requirements and height in various districts. Amending Section 27.72.060 to address porch projections into corner front yards. Amending Section 27.72.070 defining the corner lot front yard requirements. Amending Section 27.72.080. Amending exceptions to front yard requirements, and repealing the same sections of the Lincoln Municipal Code as here to existing.
David Carey, Director of the Planning Department, 555 South 10th Street, Suite 213. Here before you to present for your consideration the approval of this text amendment that addresses parking requirements, height restrictions, administrative approvals, setback requirements, and the ability to rebuild residential dwellings. And all that, we just had Sony read into the record. We recommend that these are good things to support and to approve. This was approved unanimously at the Planning Commission. We did have a briefing with you last Monday. We appreciate the time to explain what this package includes. This is really one of the many recommendations coming out of the Affordable Housing Coordinated Action Plan. This is on the zoning side, the part that the Planning Department could play a role here to bring it forward. We decided to take on that work effort, and that is, is what is before you today. I do have Steve Hendrickson here with me, if we want to talk about some specifics. And we're certainly available to answer any questions that you might have. So, thank you for the time.
Are there any questions for Director Carey at this time?
No.
Okay, seeing none.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item?
Yay.
Did I get a yay? Taylor Wyatt, on behalf of Home Builders, you want Home Builders' address then, or mine?
Home Builders.
Home Builders, okay. That's why I have this. 6100 South 58th Street, Suite C, Lincoln, Nebraska, 68516. On behalf of Home Builders Association, we appreciate being able to work with the Planning Department. And we're glad to see this go through. We think it's a good first step for affordable housing. And we look forward to working for, working with you on further projects as well. So, yes, we are in support of this.
Are there any questions for Mr. Wyatt at this time? No. I owe you a phone call, so.
I'll get it.
It's the start of the school year, so, sorry.
One other does too. I owe you a phone call.
Thanks, Taylor. Anyone else that wishes to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, we'll go ahead and move on to the next item, please.
I'll be calling item 6E, 6F, and 6G together. 6E is approving the Sky Park Apartment Redevelopment Agreement between the City and Sky Park Apartment relating to the redevelopment of property generally located at 1301 Lincoln Mall. And they related amending the fiscal year 2021 CIP to authorize and appropriate $1,331,676 in tax increment financing for the Sky Park Apartment redevelopment project, and authorizing the issuance of tax allocation bonds for the Sky Park Apartment redevelopment project in the amount not to exceed $1,331,676.
Good afternoon. Dan Marvin, Director of Urban Development. Before you is a, is redevelopment agreement with the Sky Park. And what they are intending to do is invest approximately $13 million to rehab an older building that currently has 75 apartments. They'll be taking it up to 81. Within the agreement that you have before you is an allocation of tax increment financing to help support this project. But not included in the, in the allocation of the TIF dollars is this portion of the agreement here that also includes an amount of $285,000 to be paid into a South of Downtown fund that will assist other buildings in the area for rehabbing and redevelopment of those projects. And the language that we draw this from is from, this is the executive summary of the South of Downtown redevelopment agreement that was brought to this body earlier, a redevelopment plan. And we think that it's a high priority in this area to try to come up with additional dollars to rehab existing apartments in that area, some of the older housing stock that we have. And these dollars, the $285,000, will be a key component in starting that process. We also have District TIF that will be coming into an account to help also do rehab of existing affordable units. And the other component of the plan is to incentivize redevelopment, which is exactly what's going on in Sky Park. This is a building that has become older. It's not inhabited right now, because the elevators gave out. And it's, you know, there's a term called naturally occurring affordable housing, and I'm not sure I like that term, because what that, the way you become naturally occurring affordable housing is the buildings deteriorate over time. And so, the solution that we need to come up with is how we can create tools to reinvest in those properties without the, one tool that most property owners have is to raise rents, which then counterbalances against our efforts. So, all of these efforts, I think, are working together. I ticked off some of the other items. I just want you to know, the item that you were on before is also included in the SOTO Plan, which is to encourage affordable one- and two-bedroom family residential infill by simplifying and easing zoning regulations for non-standard residential lots. I bring that up not because this particular plan does this, but we are doing a lot of things on a lot of different levels to try to capture what was in the Coordinated Affordable Housing Action Plan. This was another item too, a PUD item that this body. So, I think the good news is, we're trying to bring a lot of different items to bear. Each individual item on their own may not stand as being significant, but we are doing a lot of different items to try to address housing affordability, and also methods to try to address the sustainability of those affordable units too. So, I would stop and answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for Director Marvin at this time? Councilwoman Rebell?
Could you talk a little bit about infrastructure improvements that we might see in and around the facility as part of the tax increment financing?
On the, in the right of way, we basically have some sidewalk repair work that's being done. You know, quite frankly, Lincoln Mall's in very good shape. Earlier, this body approved an agreement with Nebco that did provide some additional dollars on Lincoln Mall to provide a bikeway between 10th Street and 14th Street. So, that will be in front of Sky Park as well.
And what about the alleys that there might involve this property?
I think it, I might, I know Kent was going to come up. I don't know that we have any alley issues there, but certainly, we can look at those as well.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Director Marvin? Seeing none, thank you so much. Is there anyone else here that would like to speak on this item?
Afternoon. I'm Gary Nelson, and I'm at 5841 Margot Drive. And I know I was here a couple of weeks ago to talk about the budget. And this is one of those things that I think affects our budget. Many, 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 many worthwhile tax incentive finance-type thing. But last year, I believe it was, and I looked, a 71.6. And now, if we add another 1.3, we're talking about $73 million. Well, we have a lot of projects, and I know the council come up with a lot of ways of additional funding. Maybe that's one where we reduce the tax increment, increment financing level by 10%. And then, maybe instead of giving $4.38, maybe we can even give $10 back to the taxpayer, so that we can go out someplace besides Subway and have a sandwich, and maybe go to a little higher-class place and have a better meal. So, it's just one suggestion, not necessarily stated against this position in this project, but just an overall philosophy that might be helpful to the individual taxpayer. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak on this item?
Good afternoon. My name is Kent Seacrest, and I'm representing Sky Park Lincoln LLC, whose principals are John Sampson and Corey Volkun. Corey's here today. If there are any questions of her, she'd be glad to answer those. I want to compliment Dan on his description and his presentation, and also thank he and his team for working on this very important project. Because it is a keystone between the traditional downtown and South of Downtown neighborhood. And it's had a great, wonderful history. Built in 1963, we showed you the bomb shelter pictures. And it's just classic marketing done at that time. It is on the Register of Historic Places, and was done so in 216. And it's the second highest historic building in Lincoln, next to the Capitol. So, it's, it's definitely a landmark, that we're excited that Corey and her father are taking on this project for the city of Lincoln. Dan did do a good description, about $13 million. And it will increase the number of units. It will really restore a falling-down garage part that we were having trouble with. Environmental remediation, removal of hazardous waste, bringing the building code back up to code and security, energy enhancements, site acquisition. And probably the biggest thing is the historic facade on those railings. It took a while, but the finely pieces in our time has been reached by the park service and the applicant on how to keep them looking like they do, but yet prevent small children and others from going between the rails and falling. So, we're pleased about that. We're also pleased to be, really, this is the first, what I call precedent of a redevelopment project that will be submitting funds for affordable housing in the South of Downtown neighborhood. It's the equivalent of subsidizing eight affordable units, which is 10% of the number of our units. Staff is recommending approval. DLA voted to recommend this project to you, and so did the South of Downtown Community Development Organization. And with that, I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Seacrest at this time? Seeing none, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to come and speak?
Yeah, Richard Howson, 6311 Nemours Road. Yeah, I imagine this project does need updating. Because I started thinking, I can remember walking past that on my way back to university from out, to my off-campus housing. That was 1964. So, it's been there a while. And I think it was pretty old then. But the question has the $280,000 for, not related to this project directly. Was that in the original agreement, or is that an add-on? Because I don't see it on the agenda. So, I guess the only question was, is that, was that in the original agreement? Not that, again, I see the additional TIF here, but I don't see that anywhere on the agenda. So, last question, was that in the original agreement?
Thank you so much. Is there anyone else that wishes to speak? Seeing none, I would invite Director Marvin back up for a rebuttal and to potentially answer the question that you just raised.
Dan Marvin, Urban Development. I forgot to give my address earlier, 555 South 10th Street. The reason it's not identified within the TIF note is these funds are being paid directly from the developer. They are not TIF funds that are being paid. And the reason for that is because tax increment financing funds need to be spent within the project area. And we didn't want to include all of South of Downtown as the project area. So, the funds are coming in outside the project area and are being paid to the city into a CIP project, so that we would be able to do rehab within buildings within a larger area. I hope that answers your question.
Are there any questions for Director Marvin? Councilman McGinnis?
Yes, thank you, Director. Is there an entity that's already set up to receive these funds, the South of Downtown?
So, it will go into, it will go into a city-owned CIP project. The line item will be, I've talked to Pat about this earlier. So, we will have, we will have the District TIF project item that will receive funds, and then this will be a sub-account to that. So, the combined account will be how we account for those funds, and what we will bring back. So, the combined account will be how we account for those funds and what we will bring back to this body at a future date. When we have worked through all the details of the implementation of it, we will do a CIP amendment for those additional funds, and we would expect probably by the spring of next year, we would come forward with a CIP amendment.
Okay.
Any further questions for Director Marvin? Councilwoman Washington?
Director Marvin, when you're, when you build that account, the CIP account, and deposit at the two-eighty-five, and will other funds be able to be deposited within the same account, or will this always be segregated?
We would, we would think that, for purposes of accounting, I think it's probably best to keep these in their own individual account.
Thank you.
Any further questions for Director Marvin? Councilman Beckius?
No, I'm sorry. I do not have any questions for Director Marvin. Sorry.
Any comments for Director Marvin?
The only, I believe, Director Marvin, this is the first time that we have accepted cash-in lieu for affordable housing units-
That's correct.
-for the city of Lincoln. I think it would behoove us to have a general discussion about that going forward. This was the first project that we've seen. I always consider affordable housing to be more of a community response rather than a developer response. And so, I think, for me at least, that would be a conversation that I'd like to have ongoing as opposed to seeing this become necessarily, not that I'm opposed to it, but I think we should have a conversation before this becomes an ordinary course of business.
Be happy to have that discussion at a future director's meeting like you did last week on the zone change.
Sure.
Any further comments or questions at this time? Okay, seeing none, thank you so much, Director Marvin.
Thank you.
Okay, we just had the public hearing and rebuttal, so now we'll move on to the next item.
We'll move on to Section Seven, ordinances, third reading, and related resolutions. Item seven A is approving the transfer of unspent and unencumbered appropriations between certain capital improvement projects introduced by Raybold. So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item seven B is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter twenty-five point zero-six, Lincoln Mechanical Code to adopt the twenty-eighteen edition of the International Mechanical Code as amended as part of the Lincoln Mechanical Code introduced by Raybold. So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote?
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item seventy is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter twenty-point-one-four, Lincoln Energy Code to adopt the commercial provisions of the International Energy Conservation Code, twenty-eighteen edition as amended as part of the Lincoln Energy Code introduced by Raybold. So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item seven D is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter twenty-point-one-four, Lincoln Energy Code to adopt the commercial provisions of the International Energy Conservation Code, twenty-eighteen edition as amended as part of the Lincoln Energy Code introduced by Raybold. So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item seven F is amending Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter twenty-point-zero-six, Lincoln Building Code to adopt the twenty-eighteen edition of the International Building Code as amended as part of the Lincoln Building Code introduced by Raybold. So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item seven G is amending Title Twenty of the Lincoln Municipal Code by adding a new chapter, twenty-point-zero-eight, entitled Lincoln Existing Building Code to adopt the twenty-eighteen edition of the International Existing Building Code as amended introduced by Raybold. So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote?
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item seven H is amending Title Nineteen of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to fire prevention by repealing Chapter nineteen-point-zero-eight, entitled General Regulations in its entirety by repealing Sections nineteen-point-zero-eight point zero-one-zero, nineteen-zero-eight zero-twenty, nineteen-zero-eight one-fifty, and nineteen-zero-eight one-sixty, and by repealing Chapters nineteen-ten, entitled Building Exits in its entirety by repealing Sections nineteen-point-one-zero point zero-one-zero as the language is outdated and is covered with the twenty-eighteen International Fire Code amendments and Lincoln Municipal Code Chapter nineteen-point-zero-three, entitled Fire Code introduced by Raybold. So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilman Beckius. Any discussion? Councilman McGinnis?
I got a quick question for Chief Engler, if he could come up. I would ask Chad, but he's not here today. Is this the one that puts into effect the sprinkling of social halls and exiting?
Dave Engler, Fire Chief, eighteen-oh-one Q Street. I believe it does. This is all under building and safety, so as far as the intricacies of this, Lincoln Fire and Rescue wasn't involved in that, but I believe it does.
Okay. Well, my question, maybe we can get it at a different time, is that if someone is filing any building permit, would they then have to go in and retrofit their facility? Are they grandfathered, or would that be a building and safety code? Question?
It's, it's, yes. It is my understanding that when they retrofit the building, they would have to comply. However, that's not a hundred percent. That would, that would be a CHAG question.
Yeah. I'm wondering if it's a fifty percent retro or not, kind of like a flooding?
Most, most, most of the time it is, yes. It's my understanding.
So, if they were going to go in and retrofit and spend fifty percent of the value of the facility, then they would probably have to. If they're going to go in and ask for, to replace a doorway or to replace a window, they wouldn't have to go with a sprinkle. That's what I'm hoping, but-
Yeah.
-the way it usually goes with codes.
I can't give you a solid answer on that.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Washington?
Councilwoman, Councilman McGinnis, I am no expert in this, but I did have a couple of conversations with Director Blahok about this, and he was, it wasn't so much, what's the percentage. We were having conversations about the time, what time it would take for people to respond, because I was a little concerned that this would be an immediate thing, and he did talk about being legally lenient so that people would be able to do this work over a period of years, two or three years, and I was certainly, had some concerns about this coming in quickly with an immediate response needed.
And did you get any questions about the three-mile limit?
I did get an answer this afternoon on the three-mile limit, and Fire Code, Lincoln Fire Code, does not extend into the three-mile growth boundary, and so, it will not affect folks out in the county, which I was a little concerned. I was very concerned, actually, about that one.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion or comments this time? Okay, seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote?
Showb?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item seven J is approving a real estate sales agreement between the city and two-two-zero-one North Cotner LLC for the sale of the city-owned property generally located at twenty-two-oh-one North Cotner Boulevard, Lincoln, Nebraska, introduced by Raybold. So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Showb. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote?
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero.
Before we go into Section Eight and Resolutions, I'm blanking on your name, sir.
Gary Nelson.
Gary Nelson. Mr. Nelson, you came to open counsel, or open microphone night about two weeks ago, asking to speak on the budget. The council told you at that time that there would be another opportunity to speak, your thoughts on the budget on the record, and we were incorrect in that. But since we told you the wrong thing, I want to give you the opportunity to speak for five minutes, what we originally, on the budget, if you wanted to take advantage of that, because we told you that that would be coming up, and we were wrong in that. So, I would like to invite you up and speak for five minutes on the budget if you so wish.
Thanks so much, because I was looking at when to respond, and I was like, okay, so, I appreciate that very much for the opportunity.
When you hear the buzzer, that means that it'll be a one-minute warning.
Yep, I appreciate that. I got to get to the right page here. First of all, Gary Nelson, again, on fifty-eight forty-one Margot Drive, and thanks for having me back. I really appreciate that. One of the things I've been kind of keeping track of, the budget process and evaluations, before it was kind of estimated at ten-point-seven, and then I saw someplace where it was eleven-point-three-eight, and then I know the paper talked about eleven percent, and then just a little bit ago, I saw eleven-point-three-eight. And so, obviously, the eleven, the eleven-point-oh-eight and eleven-point-three-eight are all higher, substantially higher in that regard. And I want to also commend you on the stalling of the project at Old Chaney and Fourteenth Street, the thirty-eight million, thirty-six million, and then I think the bid was forty-two million-dollar project. I think it's prudent, because what is the south beltway going to do with traffic? And then the other thought is, is also there, too, there's some land where you could buy one strip of land, put three lanes going to the west without affecting that business to the south there, and then just move over the Meridian one road. You got three lanes, you get about six more cars going each way. Is it a major change? No, but I think it was prudent to cancel that. I know you guys have a tough job, there's no doubt about it. Anybody who has a family, whatever, has that budgeting decisions to make and how to apply their money. And I know we talked about affordable housing. It's a good deal. Sidewalks, is it needed? Yes. Tree trimming, yes. Firefighters, yes. Playgrounds, yes. Mental health, yes. And then streets was the other thing that I saw on that list. And the mayor's budget kind of addresses all of these things that I saw. A five-thousand-dollar tax credit, housing assistance, a creation of a diversity equity office to help with housing, which, of course, it said administration, which means it's just that one person, so that would be staff, and I'm not sure how many would be in that staff, so another expense. Sidewalk was included in it. Tree trimming was included in that. One of the things that I think is different that I would do is we're talking about the ash borer, but at the same time, we're talking about carbon monoxide and so on and so forth. Well, ash trees, some of them can be huge. They suck up a lot of carbon dioxide, and so, if we're cutting them down when they're still viable, then are we defeating ourselves? Is it better to know, hey, there's an ash tree there that could be susceptible, put another tree in there, and maybe when that tree actually has to come down in three, five, ten years, how much carbon dioxide is it taking out of it? And again, it's just one of those planning deals. And the firefighters, I think, I agree, in the city of Lincoln, they do a great job, but the mayor's budget had asked for five new people in the fire department, three firefighters, one assistant fire chief, and an L, I think it was an administrative assistant. And the police, there's already seven, because five policemen, a school resource officer, and a nine-one-one detached dispatcher. Mental health, I agree. Playgrounds, the park budget is my understanding, is going up. So, is not the playground handicap accessibility, is that not part of that? I don't know. And of course, streets, we just paid point-two-five cents, so it's, I don't remember how many billion, six, seven million dollars additional. But again, a step before that was when our wheel tax went up. That was supposed to take care of our streets. Now, we're talking about point-two-five, and now we're talking about additional dollars. So, in summary, leaving with the taxpayers five-hundred thousand or six-hundred thousand, but I also did see something in the paper in one article about nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand, but that would change it from giving back four dollars and forty-three cents to eight dollars and forty-nine cents. I think some of the policies take from the middle class and give to the rich. Tax incentive finances, they are usually big corporations, and true improvement needs to be made, but how much? And if you take seven-hundred, seventy-one million, seventy-three million out of the taxpayers' budget, who's going to pay for that if we still have the same number of projects? Well, all of the taxpayers pay for that. And another thing was the city impact fees. They were held a few years ago level. Well, who's buying better homes? Well, again, it's a big contractor, and that person that's building a new two-hundred-and-fifty, five-hundred-thousand-dollar home, is that my total time? Okay. That, anyway, I always got too much to say. My challenge is to you, if the city would give back one percent, well, one, like the LPS, and like the county has, I think it would be a great day for the taxpayers of Lincoln, large and small. Thanks, appreciate it very much, and thanks so very much for allowing me to share. I appreciate that.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson.
And I do have a gift here for you. I would, oh, I can give you ten dollars. I was going to give you ten dollars to show if you can be generous and give ten dollars back to the taxpayer, I would give you ten dollars to invest in the city, in a business, in lunch, or even the several beers.
He only buys one.
I would buy you lunch.
Not during happy hour, it buys more. So, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nelson. All right, let's continue on with Section Eight.
Section Eight. Item eight A is miscellaneous two-one-zero-zero-nine, application of the planning director to adopting the proposed amended fee schedule for application reviews under Chapter fourteen-point-two-zero, Title Twenty-Six and Title Twenty-Seven of the Lincoln Municipal Code, and amendments to the Lincoln Lancaster County Comprehensive Plan with an effective date of October first, twenty-twenty-one, introduced by Beckius.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion on item eight A? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote?
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Showb?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item eight B is establishing a new rate schedule for the Lincoln Water System for purposes of covering operational and maintenance costs, including debt services and capital improvements program for fiscal year twenty-twenty-one, twenty-twenty-two, introduced by Beckius.
So, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion on eight B? Councilman McGinnis?
Yes. I'm having a tough time trying to approve a large water rate increase at this point, when it doesn't seem on the, from the high level, that it's really needed at this point. They talk about future projects, needs, and future, maybe this, or maybe a future second water supply, but when they talk about those, they talk about two-hundred-and-fifty, half a billion dollars. And for us to be putting away five million or a few million here and there, I think it'd do a lot better to be in the pockets of our citizens. And when I talk about that, everybody uses Lincoln Water, so you are paying on this, and you are, everyone will be paying for six percent increase in the water system. Currently, the Water Department has got thirty-seven million, six-hundred-and-eighty-three thousand dollars in their fund in water revenue. Last year, they had thirty-one- Last year they had 31 million, so they've had a 21% increase in their water fund. So this is just something that I've always thought, now I'm going to get in trouble with a few other people because they like construction and new water, but this is a water fund and not the sewer bonds.
Any further discussion on item 8B? Councilwoman Raybold?
I was wondering if, um, maybe the staff or, or Sherri or David Young could come and talk about the funding in that category so that we all could have a better explanation? And how does it break out with, uh, capital improvement program and versus some of the bond servicing fees? I guess that would help us better understand exactly.
David Young with Finance Department.
The inside ball of finance.
We are going to get the experts up here with LTU.
Okay.
So they'll be right up here to discuss it with you. Donna Garden has the firm grip on that.
While we're getting staff from LTU, is there anyone else that has, uh, any further discussion on item 8B? Okay, seeing none. So then we'll wait for Donna or Liz to show up. I'm sorry.
As I say, we could skip over this, move on and then come back to it.
Yeah.
Okay.
That sounds good.
Um, so we'll put a pin in that. Um, we'll move on to item 8C.
Item 8C, establishing a new rate schedule for the Lincoln wastewater system for purposes of covering operational and maintenance costs, including debt services and capital improvements program for fiscal year 2021 and 2022, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none. May we please do a, a roll call vote on item 8C?
Raybold?
Isn't this the same as the 8B or am I?
It has a.
This is wastewater.
Wastewater, oh. Okay, sorry, apologize. Yes. Am I still calling the vote for item 8C for wastewater? Okay. Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Okay, IC Director Elliott is here, so we're, we'll move back up to 8B and I believe that Councilwoman Raybold had some questions.
So I think it, it all boils down to Councilman McGinnis's questions as well. He was wondering why it seemed like there was a s- a large surplus in the budget and, and how does that pertain to the existing operational costs and maintenance or how much of is it for debt servicing? And how much is for the capital improvements program? I know we've been talking about a secondary water source for a number of years and how important that is, but, uh, how does that impact the rate increase that we're looking at?
Absolutely. Um, there's a number of things that our water budget covers. In particular, um, we do keep enough cash on hand to maintain that good bond rating. So we do have that as part of it. Um, we also have a number of capital improvement projects. We have the second water source that we are saving for. That way we don't have to borrow as much money when the time comes. Sorry, I ran downstairs. And then, um, we also have some major investments coming up, one of which is arsenic treatment. Right now our arsenic levels are pretty level, but because of our horizontal wells and the more that we're adding, we are naturally getting some more arsenic levels in that that's going to require future treatment. The future arsenic treatment is about $50 million just for that alone. And so we are looking at, we clearly don't have enough, so we're going to have to borrow in the next couple of years for that as well. We are looking at SRF funds, but we do have to have our own local match for that as well. In addition, we do have, um, the new lead and copper rule that is coming up. So we do have some additional federal regulations that are going to be imposed on us over the next coming years. Um, with that lead and copper rule, they are requiring some additional education. We have to provide some additional filterings and things like that for every replacement that we do. That's on top of the actual replacements that we are doing. Um, so those are just some of the major CIP it matters that we have coming up over the next two to five years. Uh, we also can have our just regular maintenance and ongoing budgets that we have to be prepared for.
So I guess, um, with Councilwoman McGinnis, what is the main driver of the 6% increase? Is it?
The 6% increase, we have a financial model, so it's not just us randomly picking an increase out there. We actually have a financial model that we put all of our future projects, um, such as the second water source, such as the, um, arsenic and the lead, put that all in there. And that projects how far out that we need to start doing that. So the 6% is based with all of that within the model and, um, on top of our normal operating, um, and maintenance costs.
Thank you very much.
Councilman Beckius?
Um, Director Elliott, with the 6% projection that, that we're speaking of today, um, based upon LTU's, um, plans going forward, even at the 6%, I'm assuming you will still not have enough money for the projects in which we speak and we will still be needing to find additional funding and/or taking on debt in order to finance the projects that we're talking about.
You are exactly right. The other big thing with the 6% is a compounding rate. So it, it starts now and then it, it builds over time. So we do need that. Like I said, the arsenic alone is 50 million, so it's not as if we have that extra money right now. Um, the second water source, just to start testing, i- is about 20 to 30 million dollars as well. And so just to do those early phases, we are still looking at having to borrow probably SRF funds in the next, um, 12 to 24 months.
So it seems to me like we can either save what we can now or kick the bucket down the road later and take on more debt.
E- exactly. And most of the borrowing that we do have to do does require a local match. So we can't borrow 100% on the loan. We have to have some local match cash on hand to do that.
Qualify for those.
Exactly. And we can't replenish the entire amount because we, again, to maintain that good bond rating, we have to have sufficient funds on hand should we have a major, um, incident. Obviously, we still, the other part is we have our well fills, that we are still hoping to get FEMA reimbursement on that. But they have not actually obligated any money yet. So we are still paying for the 2019 floods out of our own pocket, hoping we'll get reimbursed. We think eventually we'll get reimbursed. But in order to do those repairs now, we need this to be able to fund it.
Thank you, Director.
Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Director Elliott, I'm trying to recall the briefings from Donna and Garden in the last couple of years. Is it true that you don't have a fun, I mean, water does not have a funding source, like an operational budget per se from the city, that it's fee sourced, fee-based for your funding? Could you talk a little bit about that?
The only funding that the water and wastewater receives is from the revenues generated from this. We don't get general funds. We don't get any other, um, source of funding for this other than borrowing and rate revenue.
That's what I was trying to articulate, but I knew that I could not. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any further questions? Councilman McGinnis?
Thank you, Director Elliott, for coming down. Appreciate it, running all the way down those stairs. No, I, I really appreciate Donna and the hard work she does and how she does the forecasting out there and such. I just have a different philosophy that, um, being a separate entity, they can borrow and we are going to have to borrow. So why are we taking money now for something we don't know will be in the future? Maybe that's different than what a lot of people think, but, um, this balance seems to have been there for many years and it keeps growing every year. So we really haven't had a downturn in this balance in the, in the water fund. So at what point are we going to spend it or use it or?
Definitely, well, I do think over the next couple of years, you will see, um, as we do start to do the arsenic and as we start to do some of the pipe loop testing for a, um, a second water source or interconnect with some other facility, you will start to see some drawdowns on that. I also expect that you will start to see some borrowing, um, coming forward from the water department for those programs. So I would, um, say over the next 24 months, you're likely to see that go down. The other, um, thing that we are always, as you all know, um, kind of working across, cross, against our interest rates. Right now they're low, but two years from now they might be sky high. Obviously, um, generally we like to keep our borrowing as minimum as possible and try to pay and save as we go, which I know has come up in other realms, whether it was the highway allocation or the COPs funding. But this is something that we do try to do across the department is, um, do what we can to save and not have to borrow as much.
And we do have one, one-eyed jack in the deck at some point, the federal government and some infrastructure.
Wasn't sure what he was talking about.
You know, that is something we're all kind of holding our breath for as an option, but at this time, we can't count on it. And so we have to be prepared. Again, if we should have another flood or something, I, I'm not entirely sure how small, uh, municipality, municipalities were able to afford well replacements and fixes from that flood because we can barely do it and we're hoping that we get reimbursed, but we're able to do it because we do have those funds available and that we have planned for the future. So I think, uh, not only are we planning for those, but we're also well-prepared for any emergencies that should come up. Hopefully no more floods for a number of years, but we are prepared if we need to be.
Thank you, Director Elliott.
Thank you very much.
Uh, Sony, will you please remind us who moved and seconded that?
For item 8B, introduced by Beckius, seconded by Raybold.
Okay. All right, so we had a discussion on that. Um, let's go ahead and move on to a roll call vote.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six one. I'll now read item 8D. Establishing a new rate schedule for the Lincoln Solid Waste System for purposes of covering operational and maintenance costs, including debt services and capital improvements program for fiscal year 2021 and 2022, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion on item 8D? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote?
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Item 8E, approving the updated fee scheduled for ambulance services during fiscal year 2021, 2022, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded by Council, uh, Man McGinnis. Chief Engler, did you have something you wanted to share?
Um, I just wanted to, uh, do you want, do you want these? I just wanted to, uh, hand these out. Cause it didn't look like they were posted on the, the website. So we wanted to make sure that you have the amendment to the current schedule. So those are the current prices we're talking about.
Thank you.
I'll make that motion. I'll move to amend.
To add this table?
Add the correct schedule, fee schedule for the ambulance services for the upcoming fiscal year.
And I would second that.
Okay, that was moved and seconded, uh, moved by Councilwoman Washington, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis. Any discussion? Councilman Shob?
Do we, thank you, Mr. Chair. Do we need to add them? They were already in there. They just weren't published.
That's my understanding. So we wanted to make sure that everyone got them.
Who doesn't really need to be added. This is just for our own personal verification?
One's over there.
We're not correct.
Let's see what our esteemed city attorney has to say.
You've got it. Yancy Christie, city attorney. I, I do think that they were, this, we had a previous schedule from last year that was approved for two years. However, this new one that you have just been provided, um, was not there previously. So we do need to amend it and add this new, um, which I think is also attachment A. These are the new rates that they are asking that the council adopt.
Perfect. Any further discussion? Awesome. May we please do a roll call vote on the motion to amend?
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Okay, now back to the main motion of item 8E.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero. Section nine, nine, adopting the 2021, 22 City of Lincoln Operating Budget and Capital Improvement Program, one and six-year street and highway program, introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. I, uh, any discussion with a substitute ordinance that I believe needs to be introduced?
Mr. Bowers, Chairman?
Councilwoman Washington?
Were you asking us to approve first the certification of the valuations?
Correct. We need to add in the substitute ordinance that includes, uh, puts in the certified valuations from the county assessor. That's.
Move, yeah, sorry, go ahead. No, I, I moved to, um, uh, substitute, or excuse me, to, uh, substitute the final valuations, um, into the, um, ordinance.
Second.
Okay. That was everything originally moved by, moved by Councilwoman Beckius, seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. All this does is just put in the certified final evaluation in the ordinance. Any discussion on that? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote?
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven zero.
Okay, now back to the main motion. Councilwoman Washington, you are recognized.
Uh, Chairman Bowers, I would like to make, uh, an amendment to the budget resolution that we, uh, addressed on 811. I passed this out to everyone earlier today and I handed a copy to both Director Young and to our city clerk.
Moved by Councilwoman Washington.
I'll second.
Seconded by Councilman Beckius. Councilwoman Washington, you are recognized to open on your amendment.
Thank you very much. We heard earlier from a gentleman who came to, to speak is, um, about the complications or the complexity of building a budget. And making a community budget means addressing multiple priorities, being a conscientious fiscal manager of today's needs while keeping an eye on the future. The budget amendment as originally proposed, uh, back on 8, uh, nine, or 8/7, uh, included a $500,000 property tax cut and it went a little bit further and funded a number of unmet community needs such as affordable housing, sidewalks, urban forestry, firefighters, mental health services and streets. I know that the mayor's budget also included those, but these needs are great and we saw an opportunity to address them. During the meeting on August 11, when the budget amendments were proposed, we had a robust debate and we tried a lot of things. While in that discussion, I was very focused on this upcoming year's budget and I was also focused on trying to find a compromise. When I had a time to reflect and talk more with the budget office, it was clear that placing a revenue ceiling on the budget would affect more than this year's budget. I want to give future councils the flexibility they need to do what is best for our city. My intention was never to tie the hands of future councils by placing a cap on future revenue beyond the 21 and 22 budget. And so for that reason, I have submitted, um, the original proposed amendment with the addition of the accessible playground equipment, but removing the revenue cap of 2.9 million dollars.
Thank you, Councilwoman. Councilman Beckius, you are now recognized.
Um, looking into next year's budget and how this year's actions may, uh, impact the tax levy going forward um, for all subsequent budget years, um, I think it would be, um, prudent and cautious, uh, to, uh, revert back to where we originally started as I, there's a number of factors that I don't know the answer to yet today that I think are still looming in front of us as a community, whether that's inflation, whether or not that's what COVID still may bring to our community, what have you. You know, over the past few weeks, our council, um, has been amending street improvement agreements, one after another, uh, because the city doesn't have enough roads funding, um, for new growth areas. And, and you know, I'm proud to support this budget because it does add new firefighters and it does add new police officers. But at the same. But at the same time, uh, you know, we have to reconcile those new staff additions with the fact that, um, you know, our funded ratio for pensions are not nearly as close as to where they used to be. So, you know, given the new certified values, um, you know, I would rather reduce the tax levy and offer property tax relief as originally proposed, keeping in mind that we still have obligations to meet here in our city, um, all the while still working to strengthen our, our roads funding and to continue to strengthen our, uh, police and fire pension funding.
Councilwoman, Councilwoman Raybold, you are now recognized.
Thank you very much. You know, we're going to be doing this budget process again next year, and next year we're going to be doing a two-year budget. The reason why we did a one-year budget last year and this year was because of all the uncertainties we were facing with COVID. And they were scary. There is no bout, no doubt about it. It was a very scary situation for so many of us, for all of the families in Lincoln. But that is no reason why we shouldn't be looking at this point in time for tax relief. And I, I want to be honest, I am disappointed that we made a decision to withdraw the motion to amend, where we would say that anything above $2.9 million would go to tax relief. I want to read you a quote from an elected official back in 2015. The quote goes as follows, "To promise voters that you will cut taxes if you are elected without examining the actual needs of the community is short-sighted and dishonest. To justify foolish budget changes because you have four votes to do so is not responsible government. A good public servant prepares for the future needs of a growing city." This elected official went on to say that "We need to continue building the public-private partnerships that have created our city's surging economy. We need to work together in a cooperative fashion to enact prudent fiscal policies that improve the quality of life for all our citizens." And the person that said that was me. I said that back in 2015. And I still believe that today, that we all have to take and assess and evaluate the situation and circumstances as they present themselves to us at this point in time. We have that opportunity today to bring additional relief to our taxpayers, considering the horrific year that they have survived and the very challenging one we face going forward. We can take a record valuation increases being projected today to help provide tax relief, and that was what that amendment had proposed on August 11th. You know, this is not something we as elected officials should ever take for granted. This historic property increases are something I have not seen in serving our community for the last 12 years. Dennis Meyer, who's the budget and fiscal director for the county, said something similar. He said he hasn't seen this in all his years of serving the county, as well as prior to being, uh, with the county, he served in the state of Nebraska Fiscal Department. This is something highly unusual. We have also had sales tax revenues exceed our conservative projections. I remember last year, we scaled it back, knowing full well, we are in a full-blown pandemic, and we have no idea what's going on. And surprisingly, our sales tax revenues held strong, and they actually exceeded our projections. I want to hold up this headline. It says, "Federal aid offers historic opportunities." So we're hearing these words, historic opportunities, historic valuation increases. And it starts out, "Federal aid offers historic opportunity," with city and council officials calling this influx of $108 million, $46 million for the city and $62 million for the county. They calling it transformational, transformational. Well, folks, we have just won the lottery, and yet we cannot give more relief to our taxpayers. The county, um, the gentleman who spoke, the county is giving one cent reduction that translates into $3 million. The school system, LPS has also agreed to reduce their property tax rate by one cent, or roughly $2.7 million. My colleagues would like to remove the language that we approved at our last meeting that would give, with the additional valuation numbers that came in last week, would give $958,000 back. That's just a little bit more than one-third of one cent. They want it further reduced back to $500,000, which is one-quarter of one cent. You know, I am very proud of the Beitler administration and those who served on the city council at that time. It was myself and Larian Gaylor Baird, the two that are still involved in public service for the city. During the Beitler administration, they had advocated for tax relief, and I supported the tax relief back then, as did all my colleagues. And this was in 2017, four years ago. It was for the 2017-2018 budget, where we reduced the property tax rate, not one-quarter of one cent, but we reduced it by 1.7 cents, 1.7 cents. And today, we can't even reduce it by one cent? We can't even reduce it by half a cent? And you're saying that even a quarter of cent is as best as we can do as a city council? I think we need to let that sink in. I know we can do better. We should be doing better. We have historic valuation increases that no one has seen who's serving on the city council right now. We have had our sales tax revenue exceed our projections. We have historic funding, astronomical funding from the federal government that is going to allow us to do projects we didn't even think or dream that we could get done. Funding improvements to Lincoln Police Department, infrastructure improvements to every single one of our fire stations, all much needed, all much needed. Our city is growing. The administration has budgeted for a growing city. These are historic surplus funds that should go back to the taxpayers. I'm asking and imploring my colleagues to consider doing that, and by voting no against this amendment, to remove that language that would allow us to give $958,000 back to the taxpayer, which is a little more than one-third of one cent. That's it. That's all. Why? Because it is absolutely the right thing to do, because it is the fiscally responsible thing to do while putting the other surplus dollars to those other essential needs identified throughout the budget process that we all support and concur are important to help our city continue to grow. Our three largest political entities, the school, county, and city combined together and working together, will help our taxpayers and their families, especially after going through the most tumultuous and life-altering year. This is a year to do this. This is an historic year. I don't think we will see these things line up again. It is time to do the right thing and give more property relief back to our taxpayers.
Councilman McGinnis, you're recognized.
Just a couple of quick comments following up on what Jane has said. The new valuations, if we go forward with the amendment of Councilperson Washington to go back to the full tax asking amount, we'd be taking in over 7.3 million more than what we did last year for property tax. That will be the largest property tax dollar increase in the history of the city of Lincoln. And so I'm not prepared to just take it from our citizens and charge them that much more property tax when, quite frankly, it wasn't in the budget, it wasn't in the mayor's budget, and wasn't approved. So I think we really are, should be, um, not taking every dime from our taxpayers.
Thank you, Councilman McGinnis. Councilman Shob, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, colleagues, for your comments and, um, observations about the budget. Last week, we voted, and I did not think the amendment the Councilwoman Washington put forward was a prudent move at that time. I voted no, and I'm excited about the opportunity to undo that. I do hear what you're saying, and I have spent much time in the community, many lunches, many phone conversations, many street corner talks with people pointing at me saying, hey, you're that guy. And I've heard from lots of people, I've heard from almost as many people to say, I don't want my $4 back, improve my roads, as I've heard from people who say, I want my $4 so I can go to the restaurants and buy another beer, or as Mr. Nelson said, invest in our community. I know from my full-time job that unemployment is a record low. I know from Councilwoman Raybold's comments that our tax revenue is up. I know that property evaluations are up, which is a form of wealth in our community. We're in the middle of a booming economy, and I feel that's the time we should grow our city. We have lots of unmet need out there, and we've developed a budget that meets some of it, not all of it. There's still lots of unmet need. And we also give a small, as Councilwoman Raybold will, and I agree with her, very small tax cut on future, and this is a little thing that I have trouble, this is money that we're projecting to collect in the future. We're not giving money back, we're collecting less based on our budget and future evaluations of property. This is the next round of tax bills that the homeowners will see, property owners will see. I think it's time to invest in our community. I do understand that this will cause some pain for some people and a lot of benefit for others. It's a balancing act, and that's what we have to do, and I'm comfortable doing it this time around.
Vice Chairwoman, Vice Chairwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's a lot of things I want to say about this budget, but, um, there's just a few things to Councilman Shob's point and, and to Chairman Bowers' point, um, which I think you will say, we did not support Councilwoman Washington's amendment last time, so I want to thank you for, for, uh, what I see as correcting it. I'm going to support it, and, um, thank you for bringing it forward. That takes some, some courage, and I want to thank you for doing that. And here's, here's why. We're, we're not spending money on things that the city does not need, so I just want us all to think about that for a moment. And also, I just want to say, Councilman Shob was, was serving with you, Councilwoman Raybold, as well as Mayor Larian Gaylor Baird, and I'm sure you just forgot to mention his name, but he, he has been around for several of these city budgets, and just because we, some of us did not sit on the council, doesn't mean we weren't watching or serving in other ways. So we hear all the time about streets, sidewalks, affordable housing, parks, tree trimming, and how long that can take to get your trees trimmed, mental health services, public safety. We all know for the last two years, and we've all supported additional police officers by voting for the budget in the past, and we've all supported firefighters. These are all included in this year's budget. This budget invests in public safety and health for our families and for our businesses that have suffered, um, this whole last year. We've heard this over and over, and especially during this challenging year. These are real needs, and we're meeting them. These are commitments we have already made to our community. So I guess the question, and then what we talk a lot about up here, is this tax relief? Is it a tax cut? And I think, Councilman Shob, you explained it the best to the public that I've heard so far. But what we can control is a reduction in property taxes the next time around in the tax rate. That's what we're doing if this should pass. So it was already mentioned earlier today, I think what we have here is a difference in philosophies. That was made clear about fees when we voted just a little bit ago. That's a difference in philosophies. That's what we're elected to do. This is why we do the hard stuff. That's okay. That's how a good budget is developed. It's a balancing act. It makes good public policy. It's what's fair, and that's what we got elected to do. We're not always going to agree. For those who went deeper cuts, we've heard you, or you want more returned, we know that. I know that it's never enough. We've had people advocating that want more, more police officers, more firefighters, more money for mental health, more housing affordability, you name it, and they want more. We know that. It's never enough for either side. We get it. So I just want to say, this to me is the best and most balanced approach that I know that I can do, that I believe in, and that's, that's what the voters that elected me, elected me to do. If I'm not making people mad, then I'm not doing my job, so I guess I've been doing my job, because I've been hearing a lot from a lot of different people. So with that, Mr. Chair, thank you, and thank you to my colleagues.
Thank you. Um, I am thankful for Councilwoman Washington bringing this up. Councilwoman Washington is known as someone who seeks compromise, someone who seeks hard solutions, and someone who seeks to lead our city by lifting folks up. There's areas in my district where the streets need repair. There's areas in my districts, in my district where our sidewalks are in great need of repair, and this amendment gets us closer to making sure that we have a good quality of life in northeast Lincoln. So thank you, Councilwoman Washington, for bringing this up and, uh, starting this hard conversation. Councilwoman Washington, you are now recognized to, uh, close on your amendment, your motion to amend.
Well, thank you, Chairman Bowers, and thank you to the rest of the council and my fellow council people. This was a, a hard thing for me to contemplate. I never liked to appear as if I wasn't incredibly thoughtful and well-thought-out and researched, but I, when I looked at what the amendment did, I realized that I was, for the most part, putting a revenue cap on our budget and limiting the flexibility of the future council, of which we will be here next year to begin a two-year budgeting cycle. I want council to have the flexibility to address the set of economic conditions and needs without that cap. I know we are a resilient city. I know we are a growing city. We are also, though, heading into another period of uncertainty. There are great opportunities, and there will also be great responsibilities. And for those reasons, I support a return to the original proposal of a set of, to meet an, a set of community needs, and then provide a small tax cut. And with the additional money that we've received, more than we did plan, to add contributions to the Fire and Police Fund and to the much-needed need of streets. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman Washington. We had a motion to amend that was introduced. We had discussion on it. We now had closing on it. Before we do a roll vote, is there something you wanted to add, Director Young?
I do. I just want to clarify for the council exactly what we're voting on, the impact. So the change in the, the budget language will result in $500,000 in property tax relief, $254,198 in additional revenue to the Police and Fire Pension Fund, and $254,198 to the Streets CIP. The new tax rate will be set at .31793 cents.
Thank you. Councilwoman Raybold?
Director Young, could you please tell us what it was before this amendment were changed? What would be $500,000 for property tax cut, and then what would be the allocation to police and fire pension and to the streets?
I don't have that information right in front of me. I can get it for you here in just a minute. But I did the calculation based on just this change for this amendment.
Okay. Thank you, Director Young. So it was opened, we had discussion, it's been closed, uh, we had closing on it. May we please do a roll call vote on Councilwoman Washington's amendment?
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Raybold?
No.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried five, seven.
Now we're going back to the main motion?
Five, two.
I'm sorry, five, two.
Just for the record.
I'm sorry, 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 five, two.
Now we're going to go back to the main motion. Councilwoman Raybold, you are now recognized.
Thank you. I would, or, Mr. Young, would you like to come back and tell us the amounts?
I do have the amount. Uh, the original, uh, under the original proposal was $450,000 each for police and fire pension and for Streets CIP. The new amount is $704,198 for each.
Okay, so, so just so I under, before we remove the $2,900,000 cap... Okay, so just so I under, before we remove the $2,900,000 cap, before police and fire would be getting $450,000 each, but with, with the funding over the cap, it would, they would be now be getting $704,000 each. Okay, thank you.
Councilwoman Raybold?
Yes, I would like to make a motion that we amend the available funding in excess of 1.5 million and change it to $750,000 for property tax cut, and then 50% to police and fire pension, 50% to the streets. And I think one of the elements...
Seconded.
Oh, sorry.
Introduced by Councilwoman Raybold, seconded by Councilwoman McGinnis. Councilwoman Raybold, you are now recognized to open on your motion to amend.
And I want to thank my colleagues, and I wouldn't be so persistent on this if I didn't also hear from so many people at block parties, at neighborhood associations, at all kinds of gatherings, how important it is to folks who are of modest means, and certainly from families with young children, how they had to really struggle last year. We just heard it from a mother right up here when we were talking about the street change. She runs a daycare center out of her home, and she had to struggle through loss of revenue as it was such a trying year for families. And I think one thing that we forget about, and I don't know if Councilwoman McGinnis is going to talk about this, but, you know, affordable housing. What is affordable housing? We're talking about modest rents in the core, in the heart of our city, and those folks are going to be seeing not an 11% increase in their rents. They're probably going to be seeing a higher percent increase in their rents, because I understood from the realtors that multifamily housing, they didn't see an 11% increase in their valuations. They saw a 30% increase in their valuations. And what does that mean? That means the landlord is going to make a decision. Is the landlord going to take on that additional property tax bill, or is the landlord going to pass through that to the tenants, to his renters? And I can tell you, probably with 100% certainty, that tax increase is going to go right to those tenants who can least afford to pay for that. In the paper on Sunday, we heard that is happening across the nation, where a young family, she saw her rent go from $1,400 to $1,700, and she was outraged. She thought that was ridiculous, and she said, no, I'm not, I'm not going to renew my lease. I'm going to go look for another bargain. And she looked and looked and looked, and the sad, tragic thing is, there was nothing available. So she finally, ultimately settled, and got into an apartment for $1,900 a month. Her previous rent was $1,400 a month, and the renewal was $1,700 a month. So she learned a very hard lesson. If we are sincere, if we are honest about making sure we maintain affordability, we need to be taking measures to reduce the property tax pain that people will feel. They're not going to feel it now. They don't feel it now. They're going to be feeling it in the spring when they get their first tax bill, or if that tenant is up for renewal, they're going to get a big jolt, because they're going to see an increase in the rent that they have to pay for their home, because that's what landlords do. They pass it forward. And so again, you've, you heard me say this repetitively, and I know I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I wouldn't be that passionate if I think it's something that we couldn't do and couldn't do easily without jeopardizing our budget and the future of our growing city, because we've done it before. We have been able to do all of this, maintain our bond rating. We have been able to maintain and be recognized as one of the best managed cities in the entire United States, because we take our fiscal responsibilities seriously, and we look at the burden that we are putting on our taxpayers. And so, again, I also want to say that during this period of time, we have been so fortunate to have been reimbursed from the federal government, not only for the American Rescue Plan, which is a $108 million lottery that both the city and the county are so fortunate to have to be able to address some infrastructure needs, but certainly with the CARES Act. We talked about those individuals who were displaced, businesses who were struggling, folks who were facing eviction. We are very fortunate as a community that we were able to address those needs, but we couldn't have addressed all those needs as timely as we did if we didn't receive the funding from the federal government and spend it wisely. And what I'm saying is, I think my colleagues spoke of it this before, you know, we were enduring the pandemic, but now we're going forward to the recovery period. This is where we still need assistance. This is where we still need to be fiscally responsible. And that's what I'm saying is, if we give additional tax break to our taxpayers, combined with what the county is doing, combined with what Lincoln Public School is doing, that adds up. That helps our taxpayers out there. That eases the pain and burden of what the valuations will be doing to them come spring. And so I'm asking and imploring my colleagues to please reconsider, instead of a $500,000 tax cut, which is one quarter of one cent, to kindly raise it to $750,000. I'm not asking for 1.7 cents, like we've done in the past. I'm not asking for the full one cent. I'm saying, please, let's come up with a compromise here and, and try to bring more tax relief. I think it's a wise thing to do.
Thank you, Councilwoman Raybold. Councilwoman Washington?
Jane, thank you for coming up with another option and for continuing to think about ways in which to move our budget process forward.
Councilman McGinnis?
Yes. Again, I wanted to touch on the affordability. You know, a lot of times you say it's not just one item, but it's many items. Well, in this case, this is one really big item that's going to take away affordability for Lincoln. It's one of our, it's one of our big advantages we have. Our city of Lincoln is affordable to live in. It is a good place to live in. We've got good stock. We've got good housing stock and such, but we're going to take some options away from a lot of these people that need affordable housing by continuing to raise taxes. And like Councilperson Raybold said, it was a 30% increase average on all multifamily, and that's where a lot of our affordable housing is, is in the multifamily. It's not just the tax increase. It will be the water increases and all these. And when the landlord comes forward with the tax or with a rent increase, when their leases come up, I don't want anybody to go to the landlord and try to vilify the landlords. I want them to come here to the city council and talk to us about those increases that they're going to be getting in their rents. It's us. It's the city council. It's the mayor's office, who is a big part of this so-called compromise that everybody put together that I just learned of today, that this whole process is kind of gotten a little bit pricing. And I don't blame the county assessor, because the county assessor, we've done our report, our annual report, and we've seen large jumps in pricing of apartments and the sales. They're going, they're getting awful high. Two years ago, it was $43,000 a unit. Now we're up to $63,000 a unit is the cost to buy these. So it's not just, that causes the price to increase, and then, so we decide to take all the money that we can. And that's what disappoints me the most about going forward with this.
Councilwoman Beckus?
Okay.
Councilwoman Ward?
What I would say is that I am really excited to hear that our council is so committed to affordable housing and the concerns about how this will impact affordable housing. And I'm really excited to hear that commitment, so we can work together to develop policies that will provide relief and impact affordable housing more than the amount of money that this proposed increase and cut would provide to people. Councilwoman Raybold, if you want to go ahead and close on your amendment?
Well, again, I want to thank my colleagues for their consideration. You know, oftentimes I, I don't dig in my heels. Well, that's not true. I do. Let's, let me rephrase it. I do, on certain issues that I'm incredibly passionate about. And this is, this is certainly one of them. We have, we have been able to give relief to our taxpayers before. This is historic time. I think it's the right time to do this for all the right reasons. So I ask for your support.
Thank you. It was opened. We had discussion. It's now been, Councilwoman Raybold closed out. May we please do a roll call vote?
Schob?
No.
Ward?
No.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckus?
No.
Washington?
No.
No.
Motion lost, two to five.
We're going to go back to the main motion? Okay, and we'll have discussion on the main motion now. Councilwoman Raybold, is there anything, is there any comments on the main motion?
No comment, no additional comments.
Councilwoman Raybold?
I'm going to support this motion, because we get $500,000 of taxpayer relief. It's not enough. It is simply not enough. I, I feel like we are doing a disservice to our taxpayers, particularly those that can least afford to see these type of valuation increases through their rent or their cost of their home. But it's the other things in the surplus funds that I truly do support. The $750,000 to affordable housing is, is critical. It is needed for our community. We know that, we hear complaints about sidewalks all the time. In the budget, prior to the surplus funds, we had $1 million, and then we were able to add another $1 million with certificates of participation. We recognize that that is a need in our community. We were addressing it in the budget, but we wanted to assist with the backlog of the funding. We're hiring two more, two more firefighters to add on to the five total firefighters, chief, assistant chief, et cetera. I mean, that's what our community needs. In the budget, we were committed to hiring six law enforcement, LPD officers, which is needed. If we can hire all these people, which would be great, and if we could recruit them, if we could retain, retain them, that would be our goal. But it's a challenge during this environment. There certainly, I support extra tree trimming, without a doubt, the mental health services. I think we're so fortunate, again, when I kind of sound like a broken record and talk about the American Rescue Plan, where we have been so fortunate to have, to be able to spend $21 million of the $108 million for behavioral health needs, working with nonprofits, $15 million working with the nonprofits through the Joint Budget Committee, taking grants for nonprofits that could certainly use that funding to enhance and increase their services that our community desperately needs. That's federal funding. And then $6 million to help juveniles in our community with the support services and in a welcoming facility that they can get the help they need. This is all essential. This is all part of our budget. As you know, I would like to see more property tax relief, and I will continue to fight for it.
Councilwoman McGinnis, you're recognized.
Yeah, thank you so much. Back when this all started, I was having some troubles, but I kind of got through it, was voting for the mayor's approved budget, the one that the mayor brought forward to us, which was a 6.5% increase in property taxes and such. So I, there were some things in there that I thought maybe would have been too much, but I was willing to move forward with that. And it was a good, good number. It was a number that the mayor approved and brought to us. It was a number that we all worked hard on. I'm unwilling to go ahead and add all this extra money on top of it and take a higher tax rates. If you notice that the property tax revenue for this coming year will be about 7.3 million more dollars from the taxpayers than we took last year. General increases over the last 10 years ranged anywhere from $5 million to $1 million more. We've never, ever taken this amount. This, Jane talks about being historic. This is historic. It's Lincoln's largest property tax increase ever in the history of Lincoln. And so that's one item that I guess the city council was willing to live with, being the ones that take, being property taxes was probably the second priority, most important priority to the people I talked to when I was running. They wanted good streets, and they wanted affordable taxes. And this is just basically going opposite of that. You know, when we're talking about affordability, and Director Marvin brought it up, there's counterbalances. Well, this is a huge counterbalance to affordable housing. On one hand, we say we want affordable housing, and on the other hand, we're going to take it away from you, make it less affordable. It's a scary thing for Lincoln, for me, that we will be doing that and raising the cost of living as fast as we can in the city of Lincoln. The general fund currently has over $61 million in it. Last year at this point, we had $32 million. So we have an over $30 million sitting in the general fund. Now, some of that was a safety relief, which was about 17, 18 million of that, but that still doesn't add up to the whole amount of cash that we have on hand now. We're a rich city. We're a very rich city. We have a lot of money in all of our funds. And so for us to go forward and say we need more is really kind of, it disappoints me. And I'm disappointed in, in some of my colleagues for the, you know, even James Michael said he wants to be respectful and responsible, but then we have a lack of transport transparency moving through this. This was compromises, and these deals were done without a true, they say a compromise. I didn't know who they were compromising. I wasn't asked to be part of this. And the mayor didn't bring me in or anybody. So I, and quite frankly, a lot of my colleagues have apologized and said that, and I take that. And we're going to be working forward, going forward and working on things. But in a way, this kind of shows how this really wasn't put together in a good way. And hopefully, we can change that going forward with our new budgets, in that we can stay with what we have and what we're focused on. You know, like Mr. Nelson said, that the mayor's budget already takes on a lot of these sidewalks. We're adding, we're doubling the sidewalks. We're going from $1 million to $2 million in the mayor's proposed budget. Now all of a sudden, we need to add a couple hundred thousand more? I, I, I'm just hoping we can find people who can do work on sidewalks, because that seems to be the tough problem. We have so much cash sitting in our funds for Lincoln on the Move. These are all earmarked funds, so they are out there. I mean, our total cash on hand, including all these revenue funds that we can't really touch, has only gone up 30% over last year. So we do have a lot of money sitting there in a lot of these. You know, it's just that, like you said, I was willing to approve the mayor's 6.5% increase, but I cannot approve an 11.5% or 11.3% increase. This is really a tax taking, and I think everybody that votes for this is going to have to live with you raise property taxes significantly on the citizens of Lincoln.
I'm done. Councilwoman Washington?
I do hear what my colleagues are saying, and thank you for recognizing me, Chairman. We talk about affordable housing, and I appreciate everyone's commitment to it. I also want to recognize that people who live in affordable housing also depend upon the shared community services our community also says it needs, like streets and parks and public safety and mental health services and all of those other things. They are not monolithic, and they don't have only one need, which is affordable housing. They are able, and, and have said so in emails and in phone calls and conversations, that there are other things that they also need in a community that is vibrant and is supportive of them and their households, their families. And so I know that there is some pain here for individual property owners. I know that no one likes the idea of having to pay more for something, and it is a shock to see the valuations on our homes has gone up. But I also know that the small amount of money, when we calculate it coming back to folks, when put together in a single pot and shared amongst the entire community, can do so much good. And yes, we doubled the sidewalk fund this year from $1 million to $2 million, but we also heard that there is a backlog of over... But we also heard that there is a backlog of over seven-million dollars in needed sidewalk repairs. So I am not ashamed to fund community services, shared services that we will all benefit from in our growing community. Thank you.
Councilwoman Ward, you're now recognized.
I'm good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would just, would like to say a quick couple more things. And that would be, we, we heard that we're taking away affordability when we, housing affordability. And, and I just hundred percent disagree. That is not the case. In fact, we are, we are aiding that. And I, you just have to look at the numbers. So I would encourage my colleagues who, who feel so strongly and said that verbally, that we are not taking away housing affordability. And I also would like to remind everyone that the 2021 budget was reduced last year by four-million dollars due to cuts caused by the pandemic. So keep that in mind as well. Because it does feel like a large budget, budget increase. But do remember the year we came off of when you start talking about the numbers and the way that we've heard this afternoon. And I would say that I'm really proud to support this budget. And for those that vote against it, I would say that is, I would ask you, does that mean you don't support a time when we can increase sidewalk funding, increase the number of police officers that we've heard so loud and strong over the last two years that people have wanted? And increase firefighters. So if you don't support this budget, does that mean you don't support public safety? So it goes both ways. So you need to think about those kinds of statements before you loft those from this dais. And lastly, I just want to say it's never easy. We're not, we're not, and I did hear this said just a few minutes ago, increasing the cost of living as fast as we can. None of us would ever do that. And so I take exception to that. And with that, that's all I have at this time, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Councilwoman. Okay. I appreciate everyone's comments. Like I mentioned earlier, there's areas in my district that need repair to their sidewalks, that need repair to their streets. From our community that's saying that we need to have an increase in public safety. When I ran, I said that I would fight to make our city safe. This adds firefighters. When I ran, I said that I would make our city more inclusive. This starts funding for special needs accessible playground equipment. When I ran, I said I would work to improve the quality of life, especially in the neighborhoods that I grew up in. And repairing our sidewalks, repairing our streets is a pathway to do that. And it's something that I'll continue to fight for. That being said, may we please do a roll call vote?
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Raybold?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six-one. Item nine B is a resolution to increase restricted funds authority by one percent per Nebraska Revenue Statute thirteen-dash-five-nineteen. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Raybold. Any discussion on item nine B? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
No.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried six-one. Section ten. Item ten A is amending section eight-point-three-two-point-one-five-zero of the Lincoln Municipal Code to increase the occupation tax on refuse haulers from seventeen dollars and fifteen cents to eighteen dollars per ton, effective January first, 2022. Introduced by Beckius.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Ward. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote?
Beckius?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero. Item ten B is amending chapter five-point-four-one of the Lincoln Municipal Code relating to salvaging, recycling, and composting operations to adopt regulations and permitting requirements for businesses and individuals engaged in the buying and selling of catalytic converters. Introduced by McGinnis.
So moved.
Second?
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. I would ask if interim Police Chief Brian Jackson would approach?
Brian Jackson, five-seventy-five South Ten. This is, this was extended two weeks on the ninth. And we have been in conversation with the salvage companies within town, as well as the national offices, as well as their, their legal counsel, to perfect a better ordinance. And I think we're on the path for, for that. And I have, I would ask for an additional two weeks, and I think we would be ready at that time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oh, sorry.
Councilwoman Ward?
Maybe there were questions for.
Are there any questions for Chief Jackson? Okay, seeing none, Councilwoman Ward?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I would move to delay with continued hearing until September thirteenth.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Okay, seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote on Councilwoman Ward's motion to delay?
I have, I do have one question. Is it to also continue public hearing?
Yes, with continued public hearing. Correct. Thank you, Sony, Madam Clerk.
Thank you. McGinnis?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero.
Okay, and now back to the main motion. Any further discussion on the main motion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call vote on the main motion?
We delayed.
Or, I'm sorry, we delayed it. You guys are correct. I've been so focused on the other stuff. In robot mode. Perfect. Awesome. We'll move on.
Section eleven is resolutions first reading are items eleven A through eleven L. And there are. Section twelve pending list date certain is items twelve A and twelve B. Section thirteen is our pending list, items thirteen A through thirteen C.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Councilwoman Raybold?
I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second?
Second.
Moved and seconded by Councilwoman Washington. Any discussion? Seeing none, may we please do a roll call?
Raybold?
Yes.
Washington?
Yes.
Ward?
Yes.
Shob?
Yes.
Beckius?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Bowers?
Yes.
Motion carried seven-zero.
See y'all later.